It is seven thirteen and I call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that Clerk Jackson please call the roll.
Councilmember Beth.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Garza. I think it's not here, correct?
That's correct.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilmember Garza is not present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next of y'all, please would join me in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is my understanding there are no minutes, Mr. Clerk? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, you know what, I'm sorry, I forgot our meditation this evening. I'm out of practice, it's been three weeks. Are there any members of our community or individuals that the council members or the mayor wish for us to keep in our thoughts during a moment of reflection? All right, if you all would join me in a moment of reflection, which will not end with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, are there any late items?
Not this evening.
Okay, then where are the special ceremonies and presentations?
Councilmember Spitzley, I believe that you are presenting this tribute, so I will call on you first for any opening remarks before we turn it over to Marilyn. Councilmember Spitzley, there you go.
That whole unmute thing, thank you. Just briefly, you know, it is a great honor to be working with our council members to put forth this resolution. You know, Juneteenth is a event, an occurrence, that's extremely important to me, of course. And it tells, it recognizes the last group of enslaved beings to learn that they were set free by President Lincoln, but they were in Texas and they didn't realize it until several years later. And so, this is a celebration of that date when they were finally informed that they were in fact freed from bondage. We have a resolution prepared for them, and I'll read the resolution really quick and I'll move it and then Marilyn can do her thing and is that, is that fine, President Spatterfor?
That's great, that's great.
Okay. Whereas the oldest African-American holiday was first recorded on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. It's now an official state holiday in fifteen states across the country, and it was on that date that the news of the Emancipation Proclamation, which President Lincoln signed on January first, eighteen sixty-three, reached the slaves of Texas. Whereas the twenty-eighth annual, I'm skipping rather, whereas the twenty-eighth annual Lansing Celebration of Juneteenth and the seventeenth year recognition of the Juneteenth Day as a state of Michigan holiday will take place Thursday, June seventeenth through Saturday, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Juneteenth Day. It begins with a virtual open ceremony on June seventeenth and continues on June eighteenth with a virtual baseball commemoration of the Negro Leagues. Whereas in honor of the memory of its founder, the late Reverend Dr. Michael C. Murphy, an African-American caravan parade through Lansing's south side neighborhood of Churchill will be held on the morning of June nineteenth. And the parade will begin at Wainwright School parking lot and end at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, and the celebration will follow, which includes food, merchant vendors, children's activities, a health fair, educational exhibits, and musical entertainment. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Lansing City Council hereby recognizes the twenty-eighth annual Lansing Celebration of Juneteenth and the seventeenth year recognition of the state of Michigan Juneteenth Holiday. We extend our appreciation to the Juneteenth Committee for all their work in continuing the founding theme "Juneteenth, Where the Reunion Wins", where the reunion begins, and we wish you much success. And we know that Marilyn Rogers now has been an active participant and coordinator of this for many, many years, and we also celebrate her as she continues to coordinate this and wish her well. And with that, Mr. President, I would move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmembers Spitzley, that's a proper motion. Is there any further discussion before we adopt this resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the tribute?
There we go, sorry. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Beth.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Spitzley, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Councilwoman Spitzley, yes, and I'll see everybody on Saturday. I'll be by the food.
Thank you. So, thank you, that motion carries and the tribute is adopted. Marilyn, welcome back to City Council. I think this is your first virtual presentation with the group, but you're, you should have screen sharing privileges, and if you want to unmute or turn your camera on, please feel free to do so, but welcome back. Marilyn.
All right, thank you. I was muted, of course, talking and not hearing. Thank you so much, Lansing City Council. It's good to see all of your faces, and we certainly want to thank you for the resolution in honor and reverence of Juneteenth's history here in Lansing. So, I believe I can screen share. We try to do that as we thank you for that recognition. Is everyone seeing the Juneteenth logo currently?
Yet.
Not yet? Oh. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I was getting privileges for sharing.
You should, you should be. Let me. They took away my admin privileges. Yeah, you should be able to share. If not, let me see if I can get the correct one.
I'm wondering, from what I've sent you all previously, is anybody able to help me?
Yeah, yeah, let me, I'm trying to pull up, pull up the right one here. I got the PowerPoint and the.
Okay, neither one should work, but the PDF is simple.
Yep, just a moment here. And you just tell me when to switch. Oh, you know what, it worked, someone did it.
Very good, very good. So, thank you. On behalf of the Lansing Juneteenth Committee, we are, it has been announced that we're celebrating the twenty-eighth anniversary of the Lansing Juneteenth Celebration. So, we are excited. It's a, we're ecstatic. Twenty-eight years is a long time, and we're still running strong. So, we thank you for the acknowledgement. Also, the Lansing Juneteenth Committee went to the Michigan Legislature to help secure the, the actually holiday that we celebrate as a state of Michigan Day of Recognition, and for us now that is seventeen years. So, we're very proud. My leadership team is being shown right now, in addition to myself. We have Mary Gibbs, she's with us this evening. I don't know if she has an opportunity to say hello or will be allowed to be unmuted. The Reverend Dr. A. Richard Doss is our chairman of our Board of Peers, which is our five oh one C three organization that allows us to reach out to many organizations as well as the city and just others to be able to find resources to host and to provide the Juneteenth Celebration to the city of Lansing. So, we are certainly gracious for all that is being planned and taking place. So, if we could just, thank you, President Spatterfor. Those are the smiling faces of my Juneteenth Committee members. We're growing strong, and each year we add more workers to the field of the Juneteenth Celebration. So, they're all out there somewhere, but I wanted you to see their, their faces, and we're certainly twenty-eight strong and growing. So, thank you for sharing the photo composite of the Lansing Juneteenth Committee. And lastly, we want to share the celebration activities with you, and I want to thank Councilwoman Patricia Spitzley. We got your communications and certainly thank you. We look forward to seeing you as many others. I know we'll be seeing our clerk, who's involved and who's going to have a setup to help Lansing's residents be provided with voter information. I know we'll see the mayor, many of you. So, just thank you. So, we're looking forward to that, and we'll be sending you a special invite to join us on Thursday, June seventeenth, which is our kickoff ceremony, and we're celebrating and awarding our SA and Scholarship winners. These are our students virtually from the Lansing area. You'll be able to watch the program virtually by means of our Facebook and also streamed at our website. But we will certainly send you a personal invite to share that program and to congratulate the students. Our keynote speaker is none other than Hester Wheeler, who is the state of Michigan's Assistant Secretary of State. He used to certainly walk the streets of the Lansing Capitol back in the day, along with myself and many others. So, we're looking forward to his message of encouragement. And on Saturday, as Councilwoman Spitzley has indicated, we have a grand opening by starting with the caravan African-American parade. So, the term caravan is being used because everybody's going to be in a decorated vehicle this year, and we're going to find a way through the streets of the Churchill Downs neighborhood and some of the streets on the south side of the city, and we're going to pass our Lansing Police Station on Wise Road, and we're going to land at the Alfreda Schmidt Community Center. So, we certainly hope to have Ms. Alfreda with us. I know she's been invited, and we're waiting for that response, but we would love to have her be a part of our opening and welcome all of Lansing's community to the center. And at that point, we are going to kick off at the main stage, our opening, with some traditions of the country of Africa, some of the traditions of Juneteenth as it started, and it was mentioned earlier in our resolution. But again, please look to our website for all of the details. We look forward to having all of you join us, and I'd just like to say that that is the lansingjuneteenthcelebration.org website. And we want to thank our many, many sponsors who have helped us provide the resources to bring it to the city of Lansing. So, we will continue to keep the legacy rolling and to continue to educate our community about the positiveness of Juneteenth and the interaction with everyone to make, you know, our community the best that it can be. So, we want to thank you again for the opportunity to share, and we want to thank the City Council, of course, for their resolution, which we will share with the Lansing community at our website as part of our Juneteenth Telegraph's virtual newspaper. So, thank you again.
Marilyn, thank you so much. And we were able to pull Ms. Mary Gibson as well, if you wanted.
Yes, I do. I'd like her to have a quick word, Mary. If you can hear us.
She's, she's got her camera, so, Mary, if you could unmute, we were happy to have you here tonight.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, I'd like to say thank you for that resolution. We really appreciate that. And Marilyn gave a very descriptive information about what's going to happen with the Juneteenth Celebration on June seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We certainly hope that you all can come out and support us in this effort. And I like to say ditto to everything that Marilyn said. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it was a mouthful.
Thank you very much, and go ahead. Marilyn, did we lose you? Oh, she muted. Okay, thank you very much, Mary and Marilyn, and to all the committee members and Councilmember Spitzley for the tribute, getting that in front of us this evening. LansingJuneteenthCelebration.org for all the details. Again, those, the event will be streamed on Facebook Live and YouTube, it looks like, or join the festivities that were mentioned this evening. So, thank you much. We'll move on, Mr. Clerk.
Hey, we're on comments by the council members and the city clerk.
Sure. Comments by council members. Any council members wishing to make remarks this evening, please raise your hand. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I didn't get my raise hand app out there in time. Just want to announce that anybody who would like to receive the Fourth Order, our occasional newsletter, just informing people of what's going on in council. It's just me writing it, nobody, no famous author or anything, sometimes a guest author, but nonetheless, if you would like to subscribe, please email me at B Jackson. No, Brian T.Jackson at Ingham. I'm mixing all my emails up. Excuse me. Brian T.Jackson at LansingMI.gov. Final answer, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I wanted to acknowledge and thank the Southwest Action Group, better known as SWAG, for hosting a, what was a day of service community cleanup. It was back on May twenty-second, so I think our last meeting was May seventeen, so I haven't had the opportunity to publicly acknowledge their efforts. But any event on May twenty-second, about thirty to forty people met early that morning at the Town Square near the intersection of Pleasant Grove and Holmes, and put forth really just an incredible, I think it was about an eight, nine hour effort to, to really beautify and move for that area. It's an area which has historically been undersupervised, under-resourced, has had issues with violent crime and the like. And, and it was, it was a fantastic effort. We had young people out, we had some of our more senior members out. Huge shout out to Larry McConnell, who actually came out on his seventieth birthday to participate. Really appreciate you, as well as Jean Sayre from Churchill Downs, both from Churchill Downs, that came out to participate. It was her birthday as well. Whereas most of our volunteers came from southwest Lansing neighborhoods. We had Churchill Downs represented, Coach Light Commons, we had the Lansing Neighbourhood Organization represented, Ava Woods Colonial Cooperative and the like. We also had some of our members of our east side community out, and so we really appreciate those folks as well. It was just truly a fantastic day. We were able to do a lot of work. We reestablished the flower beds at nineteen ten Food Market. We did a ton of work at the Town Square with regards to landscape. We did, we freshened up the flower beds, general maintenance of that Town Square. We completed a number of projects over at Beacon Field South. We planted trees and perennials and inserted a number of just other landscaping pieces in front of Drake's Market, which is at the northwest corner of the intersection. And, you know, this is important work. And so, again, I really appreciate the folk, the folks, sorry, that came out on May twenty-second. It's the, you know, it's, it's this type of work that really instills, I think, pride in our community. It brings people together. It advances, community creates ownership. So, again, I just wanted to, to thank the folks that came out. The other piece is, I wanted to thank Emma Henry, as well as the Capital Area Housing Partnership. We were able to utilize their tool truck, and that certainly went a long way in ensuring that we were able to get the work done. So, again, thanks to everybody, as well as the Capital Area, sorry, Housing Partnership. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Vice President. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, Vice President Hussein would not mention that there was a cleanup all day Saturday, but as I was coming up early Sunday, when everybody else had left, and I was taking my mom to the grocery store, there was him and his family on Sunday planting trees on Holmes Road in front of the market there. And, and to me, that was just a shining example of just the dedication that Councilmember Hussein has for the third war, that he's there with his family on Sunday when everybody else is gone. And, and everybody, you know, the, the official cleanup was over, but he's still there with his, with his weed whacker and his rotor tiller, you know, tilling up grass and planting trees. And so, I wanted to give a shout out to Councilmember Hussein because, you know, he's always giving accolades, and he rarely receives them, and so I wanted to give a shout out to him and, and thank him for his service. One other thing I want to mention, and I apologize for the voice, it's cottonwood season peeps. I wanted to mention, you know, a number of my constituents, I got a call from a number of my constituents about the announcement for that we would be only collecting yard waste every other week. And one of the things I wanted to ask the mayor is if he would be able to just kind of discuss that a little bit, because I think, I think we missed an opportunity. You know, folks are very concerned, but there's a very good reason why yard waste has, is, is for, is, has been changed to every other week in, you know, in the, in the short term, and it's because of the drought, and it's because of a saving of, you know, gas and, and equipment. And so, we're really, you know, saving and lessening of our carbon footprint, all of that. And so, I wanted to kind of mention that and, and talk about, and, and then, of course, have the mayor have an opportunity to talk about that as well. But, so, those are my two comments. And, you know, Mayor, if you would like to give a little bit more clarity on the yard waste thing, I'd really appreciate it. And I apologize if you guys talked about this in Cal. I apologize.
We did not, so thank you for that, and I'm sure the mayor will address that in his comments. Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. I don't see any other council members with their hands up, so we'll move on to the clerk and then the mayor's comments. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. I'd like to provide an update on how any voter has the choice to vote at home, vote early, or vote on the city primary election day in August third. Every active voter should have received an application to vote at home, also known as absentee, for the city primary and, and a general election. You could sign that and then drop it off in your fifteen drop boxes located all over the city, at every fire station, community center, and more locations, like at the south end of the Cata Transportation Center downtown Lansing. And, yeah, there you go. Thank you, Council President, for that visual. And, and you also can return them by U.S. mail. To see the interactive map where all those locations, links to voter registration, and so much more, please visit our special election website, lansingvotes.com, and you'll have all that information there. Also, you can start to come in to vote early, starting on June twenty-fourth, to our South Washington Election Unit or over at City Hall. You can receive your ballot and then vote it all in one visit, or you can take it with you until it's the day before the election. So, plenty of time, either fill it out there or to take it with you. If you do receive those, one of those applications, like the Council President showed, and it's for someone who doesn't live in your house anymore, please mark it "return to center" and put it back in the mail. By taking that odd step, instead of just recycling it, you're helping us clean up the voter rolls. We need to receive return mail in order to start the process to remove someone from the list of eligible voters. So, by taking that step, that will really help out the whole process. And so, if you have questions at any, anything related to the election, you can call us at five one seven four eight three four one three one, or email city.clerk@lansingmi.gov.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and that reminded me to fill mine out.
There we go.
There you go. Is there any questions for the clerk before we move on to the mayor's comments? Very good.
Community event announcements.
Oh, yeah. Community event announcements, Mr. Clerk.
Do we have anyone?
Those wishing to leave, provide announcement about upcoming community events, you'll have a minute to do so, and please raise your hand virtually. Option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on a PC, and star nine if you've dialed in using your telephone.
Okay, it looks like we have Michael Lynn Jr.'s community announcement.
Hello, this is Mike, talking on behalf of America Twenty to Life. Tonight, we're going to be having Judy Booker on, whose son Timothy Minor was killed on Birchfield about a month ago. And we're going to be discussing the lack of effectiveness by LPD, as well as some bad media outlets speaking on the two young men that were killed. And this is seemingly a, a topic that's been brought to me a lot of times. So, we're going to be live tonight at eight o'clock till ten with Sherri Pruitt speaking on her son, Richard Pruitt, and as well as, again, Judy Booker speaking on Timothy Minor III. You guys can find that on America Twenty to Life on Facebook. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Okay, so next we are to Speaker Registration for Public Comment and Legislative Matters. Legislative Matters consists a show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make safe or demolish at fourteen twelve West Ionia Street and two one nine Worden. We also have one public hearing and, and all the items numbered six through twenty-one on the, on the agenda, which are scheduled to be voted this evening. So, those wishing to make a comment, a comment, will need to raise their hand virtually within three minutes of the first speaker. Sign up now, no reason to wait till the last minute, and the windows sign up, again, will close three minutes after the first speaker starts talking. To raise the hand function, you can dial star nine on your phone. You can click the raise hand icon in the chat room, press Alt and the Y keys, same time if you're in a Windows computer, and you can press Option Y if you're using an Apple computer. Now on to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I have a whole variety of things I want to share, but first I will reference Councilwoman Spitzley's comment, and, and she's not the only one to ask. I know Councilman Jackson had sent me a text and a few others. I think Councilman Hussein mentioned it. Certainly with the yard waste, that was a challenging decision, and everything that Councilwoman Spitzley said was correct. But even more importantly, we have staffing issues. We are very seriously trying to get seasonal staff, and we have been unable to, to get enough seasonal staff to effectively pick up the yard waste on time. So, we want to make sure that we can pick it up in a scheduled time, as people know. So, we are going to every other week. We are planning to go to every other week, although we may change that back. I know Councilman Jackson asked me if we, you know, if we do get enough seasonal staff, if we can go back to every week, and I'm certainly open to that. But at this point, we have a staffing, a seasonal staffing shortage. After we announced it, we had people who called me and said, hey, I'll do it, I'll volunteer. You have to have a CDL permit to be able to drive the trucks, and that's a little more complicated. And we actually do pay for people to get the CDL permits, but probably won't get it before the end of the season. So, if you're out there and you have a CDL permit and you want to be a seasonal worker in the city of Lansing, please feel free to give us a call. But that's, that's why it went to every other week, and I'm also hearing it from folks, but when you make that explanation, they understand. Because there's a lot of people right now who are trying to get employees, small businesses, and others, and are having challenges. So, that seems to be a pretty common situation right now. Moving on, we have a variety of things that are coming up. The mayor's family River Walk and Run is this Saturday, June twelfth. It's, it's either in person or a virtual option. You can see the details on our website. I will be running, probably very poorly. So, if you want to beat the mayor in a five K, this is your chance. So, I will be running. Fourth of July events, we are going to be having the Fourth of July Parade, so that's, that's exciting. It will be at eleven AM. It's the same capital loop that it's always been every year, except for last year. COVID-nineteen health and safety guidelines at the time will be followed, the, the masking changes in July first. Anybody who wants to be in the parade can register on our website. Just notice that it's July third. The Fourth of July Parade is July third, because the Fourth of July falls on a Sunday this year, and we don't want to do an eleven AM on a Sunday. So, it's Saturday, July third is the parade. I'll say it again. The fireworks, though, will also happen, and that will happen on July fourth. Sunday, July fourth, at approximately ten PM, ten after ten PM. There's no concert this year, but we are doing the fireworks, and the best places to view them will be Riverfront Park, Durant Park, or Marshall Park. Moving on, I'm really excited, and I know Councilman Hussein was part of this, I'm really excited to announce that we're going to have a fellowship intern Uh, a, a fellowship intern for our South Martin Luther King Corridor Improvement Authority. Uh, we've got uh, something like this for our Michigan Avenue Corridor, and now we're going to have a dedicated intern working with our businesses on our South MLK Corridor. Just really exciting because that is, you know, there's so much potential there. There's so many great people that we've recruited. Now we've got, in essence, a resource, someone to help them out. So that's really exciting. I want to thank the Community Economic Development Association of Michigan for um. Accepting our application and granting us that ability. Um, so congratulations to all those folks, and and we're looking forward to that. Um, a few thank yous, I want to, I want to thank some folks who, since the last council meeting, did a cleanup in Rio Town. Um, we did a cleanup in Saint Joseph Park, which was crazy. We pulled a mattress out of that railroad area. We pulled a huge big screen TV out. Um, it was a lot. Uh, I think uh, Councilman Hussein already mentioned the swag cleanup. Um, I want to thank everybody who put on the three Memorial Day events that we had. Uh, the Sons of the Union Veterans, uh, the memorial for all of our Lansing firefighters who have uh, who have died in the line of duty. Uh, which is always very powerful, um, and our city Memorial Day event, uh, which, you know, the great Alfreda Schmidt was there. Um, but we had quite a few people there, and it was a, a great event as always. Uh, I want to thank all the folks at Cristo Rey, uh, who put on this year's Fiesta. I got to once again be a runner and serve food at Fiesta, and that was so much fun. I know Councilman Garza was there. Um, so that was a whole lot of fun. Um, and then I wanted to announce two more announcements, then I'm done. First, uh, our community centers are reopening, which is really exciting, as we have activities, and we know we need activities for our kids and our seniors. Uh, Schmidt Center is now open. Uh, the Foster Center will open next week. Uh, our uh, Learning Lab program will be done with the end of school, so Foster will open up. Guyer will open on the twenty fourth, uh, and then we anticipate Let's opening uh, in early mid-July. Um, so that's, that's exciting, that, that we're slowly getting those open again. Uh, I mentioned the yard waste, uh, and then. We announced today that our pools are, are opening Hunter and Schmidt. Uh, so Hunter Park Pool will, will be open from one until four and five until seven PM daily through August twenty second. And the uh, Schmidt Center Pool, uh, Lap Lanes will be open nine AM to twelve PM by reservation, Monday through Friday. And then the open swim is one to two thirty from Tuesday, uh, Tuesday through Thursday. So a lot going on, a lot of excitement, uh, things that were basic in the past that are now um, exciting because they're happening again. We're, we're coming out of COVID and and uh. And that's what I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, before you move on, I just. I know we're done with your comments and my comments, and I missed the opportunity. I have heard quite a bit, this is not at you, Mr. Mayor, this is just council member comments. I've heard quite a bit of concern related to BWL's transition to a new payment portal, and anyone who's paying attention. Um, note that uh, there is a transition going on, and I, I think that means there's new account numbers, and I have reached out to the board as well, and Sherry in our office has done a lot of work on this, and I know. Many of you have received emails and phone calls. Um, if you were enrolled in auto pay. Um, that is expired and you have to re-enroll it, and your next statement should be coming in June, and the Board of Water and Light will not be um. Issuing late fees in the month of June. Um, I will admit right here on public access that I missed my June payment because I was enrolled in auto pay. So I was past due with the Board of Water and Light, um, and it was definitely, uh, I had to figure out the new system, but just be on the lookout for your new paper statement. Um, to, to re-enroll in your, your account if you had auto enroll or to, to get a new access um, user ID to the new system. Um, it's a pretty interesting system. It's got, is able to track your energy and water consumption and be a little bit more um, smart about your, your consumption choices, but. It's a new system, so it takes some getting used to, so I just want to make sure folks were aware of that. Um, and I did see Councilmember Spitzley put her hand up, so we'll, we'll do that and then we'll move on. Councilmember Spitzley.
Sorry, uh, Council President Spatterford, but I promised a constituent I would ask this question, so. Don't shoot the messenger, but um, one of the questions I've had, as a fact, I've had it from a couple residents are, are we going to, are they going to see a reduction? In their bill because you're going to every other week? Is there going to be some sort of reduction or, you know, credit on their bill for this?
For yard waste? Oh, that's not at me, is it? Mr. Mayor, that's, I don't know. Mr. Mayor, your turn.
Yeah, we haven't had that conversation, so we can, we can talk about that. I mean, it's still going to be the same. Collection is just every other week, but um, we'll have to have that conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that moves us on to the next item.
Yeah, okay, so we're about to public comment on legislative matters. So legislative matters again consists of items number six through twenty one, which are scheduled to be voted on this evening and the following public hearings. We have a show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make safe or demolish. Or two locations, one is fourteen twelve West Ionia Street, and the other is at two one oh nine Warden. There also is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance to amend chapter sixteen ten of the Uniform Fire Code and Uniform Fire Code Standards. Again, for those wishing to make comments, uh, please do so, continue to do so now. Need to raise your um, in, because we were closing this window within three minutes after the first speaker. Uh, again, how to raise your hand. Dial star nine on a phone. Click on a raise hand icon in the chat room. Press the Alt and the Y keys at the same time for a Windows computer. Or press Option in a Y key at the same time for an Apple computer.
Or we move to public comment, why don't I have Councilmember Woods summarize the hearings? Um, Councilmember Garza has an excused absence this evening, so uh, that is why Councilmember Wood will be presenting on these two, these three items.
Uh, thank you, President Spatterford. The first one is fourteen twelve, um, West Ionia. Uh, this uh, property was originally tagged in on March fourth, two thousand and nineteen. It was submitted to the make safe or demolish process on January twenty um, eighth, twenty twenty. Um, the property, um, the value of the structure is forty four thousand, two hundred and eighty seven dollars. Uh, the estimated repairs is a hundred and twenty four thousand, four hundred and thirty three dollars and eighteen cents. No one was at, was present at the uh, demolition board nor at the public safety uh, meeting uh, when this was presented. Uh, the next is uh, twenty one, um, oh nine Walton, Eric Walton, Warden. Um, this um, property was originally tagged in November thirtieth, um, two thousand and eighteen. It was submitted to the make safe or demolish um, board on August twenty third, two thousand and nineteen. Um, this property structure is valued at um, seventy seven thousand, um, two hundred and thirty two dollars. The estimated cost of repairs is seventy nine thousand dollars. Um, again, uh, no one was present at the. Um, make safe or demolish before that board nor at the public safety meeting. Lastly, is the international um, fire uh, code uh, that we have before us. Um, the international fire code is similar to um, the electrical code. Um, these um, revisions are adopted uh, periodically. The last adoption was two thousand and nine. Uh, what we will be doing is moving this up to the uh, standards for two thousand and eighteen. They always lag behind um, by a couple of years from the um, time that they're introduced. Um, before the legislature and then they are enacted on. Um, the only changes in this have to do with the dates. Um, everything else is um, uh, the same. Uh, this also did take into uh, the, the changes that were um, approved by this body dealing with uh, marijuana. Um, uh, at the time that um, we made changes to the fire code at that time. Uh, so with that, um, those, the public hearings that we have before us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Mr. Clerk, uh, we are now to public comment.
Okay, so we have first is Louetta Stanaway, followed up by Dennis Recky.
Good evening. Um, just a couple of quick things tonight, and they're all in those ordinances for passage to amend. And reduce to uh, municipal infractions versus what they previously were. Uh, the ordinance six about closed parks, um, I am opposed to changing that for a couple of reasons. Including the fact that the parks are frequently occupied even now when they're closed. And that is a safety issue, especially for the people on a river trail at night in the dark, and that, that is a widespread problem. There are a lot of people that use rightly or wrongly, um, the river trail at night in the dark. There have been several instances where people were injured. Um, and it's very difficult for the police or the medics to find them. When they can't say where they're at because they're out there in an unknown stretch in the dark, so I would oppose changing that. Um, and then for ordinances eight and nine. I don't necessarily oppose changing those, but as I'm reading the documentation, the documents for them each say they are being repealed. Rather than altered, so I would ask you to double check your paperwork on that, and maybe I'm not seeing something correctly, but it does look to me like. The um, documents state repealing the uh, ordinances rather than amending the ordinances. And that is it for me.
Hey, thank you. I know we did uh, change the agenda or originally had um, and language changed, but they had the title changed, but I'm, you don't look at the ordinance. All right, this is Dennis Recky, followed by Aaron Schultz. Our last speaker. Dennis? Dennis, you're muted. That mean you.
Uh, why don't we try it as the next speaker and I will.
I did the ask.
There you go, Dennis.
All right, am I open?
You are.
You are now. We can hear you, Dennis.
Okay, thank you very much for hearing me. Uh, first of all, I mentioned that I had not been to any meetings. The only meeting that I was uh, invited to or I'd heard of, I believe, was two years ago. It was my intent or a year ago, went right before COVID. It was my intention at that time to rehab the property. I'm the owner of the property on two one oh nine Warden. Uh, it was my purpose at that time to rehab the property and put it up for resale. At that time, COVID hit and everything kind of went to a, a complete stop. I had arranged for financing back uh, in, in two thousand and nineteen. I still have that financing. And I'm right now in a process of getting bids. I'm doing a rehab to the house. I think would be more beneficial to the city to have a rehab uh, home and put it up for sale and keep it on the tax rolls. Than to have it demolished, and I would like to um, be considered for that. Thank you. Any more information I'd be, you know, willing to provide?
This uh, issue will go back to our committee on. Operations, public safety, excuse me, public safety. Uh, Carol, please remind me of the date of that.
Um, the next meeting is um, the tenth, I believe. I kept a double check, um, but I believe it's the tenth.
Yeah, Mr. Recky, please check out the Committee on Public Safety, which will be meeting on the tenth of this month. That will be an opportunity for the committee to revise or um, hear, I'm sorry, revise here your um. Concerns more specifically.
Okay, now that's the tenth of this month?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and how do I know where this meeting is at, and will I be notified or?
You won't be notified. It's on our website under our, um, under agendas, much like this one was, um, and you can join virtually.
Okay. Mr. President, I would encourage him to call the office and speak with Sherry. That number is four eight three four one seven seven.
Four eight three four one seven seven.
Correct.
And talk to Sherry?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, please continue.
Okay, and so our last speaker is uh, Aaron Schultz.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, yes, um, I have actually pulled more than a few permits lately for the home, and. I'm not completely sure and haven't been able to get a clearance about anyone at the city. How I got on this list was started with a porch that was power washed. And then they tried to hit me up and say that I built a new porch, and that was never done. I sold the house under land contract. Uh, right before COVID, I did the eviction process, and that actually fell right after the, when the um, moratorium on evictions was there. During that time, the lady at the house um, was getting tickets for loans and things like that. Went by there and tried to approach her about that, and we had a confrontation with her about how she can't be evicted and everything else. Police were called. She said, I couldn't go by. So then she dressed outside. They just got me some tickets and everything, but. Um, the, the house i- is fine. Inside everything now, we fixed everything. I put a new furnace, and I didn't even mention that to the. City myself, and we are. We have someone who is buying the place from us here in three months after we get these kind. The way scheduling is with the contractors too, to have them come fix the couple of things we need to take care of too. It, it's just what's holding us up. I mean. The city, the city compliance office is closed. I can't get a hold of them. They haven't even came by to check, inspect the new furnace that we just put in. Two months ago, and on the last meeting, I couldn't get into. I was at the meeting, I don't know if, I, I don't know whatever technical reason that was, multiple emails I sent to Scott Sanford were never. But that's, I've never even been able to address the issue of what this all started from, which was a porch being power washed, and then. From, from there, just kind of. I, I think we've been targeted as a problem house, and we're not that. We don't want to be that, so. I, I'm not sure where the resolution comes for us here because I'm not even able to get calls back from the Department of Compliance.
I don't mean to interrupt. Um, which property is this?
Uh, fourteen twelve West Ionia Street.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this will also go back to the Committee on Public Safety on June tenth. Um, and much like the last uh, person addressing a public here, a show cause hearing, excuse me. Uh, we would encourage you to reach out to the city council office. Uh, Sherry is very good about getting back to folks. She could provide you with the details. About how uh, to participate in that hearing and uh, specifically present this information to the committee.
Yeah, and I was out, yes, definitely. I, I really appreciate that, and I was out west during COVID. With my parents, I'm back in town now, so there's a couple gaps on the mail there on things, but. It, this really started with the porch issue, and things really got out of con- control from there, and I. I just would really like to find some way to resolve this with someone that I can even get a hold of on the phone or on email.
Yep, absolutely. So um, again, I, I don't want to interrupt you, and you still have some time to speak, but our phone number uh, to speak with Sherry is five one seven four eight three. Four one seven seven, and she can help you uh, get, get to the committee hearing that, that this, where this, where you can present that information more thoroughly.
Okay, so once again, so the number is five eight three, five one seven, uh, four eight three four one seven seven.
That's correct.
Her name's Sherry.
Yep, Sherry is our office manager.
Awesome. I mean, we have a camera at the house. The neighbor's house next door is grass is worse, and they just drive up and write the ticket, so I mean. I don't want to be the, the problem on this list. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I, I really don't know where to go forward here. I know, I don't have to be dealing with sound.
Appreciate that.
Right now.
Your time, your time has expired, but um, if you want to present uh, at the Committee on Public Safety, uh, Sherry's on this meeting, and she'll know, she'll expect your phone call uh, tomorrow. Or after tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that concludes the public comment, so we'll refer the, the show cause and the public hearings.
Yep.
So we have the, in consideration of orders to make safe or demolish for fourteen twelve West Ionia Street.
The Committee on Public Safety.
And then we have also the make safe or demolish at two one oh nine Warden.
Committee on Public Safety.
And then we have the ordinance to amend chapter sixteen ten Uniform Fire Code and Uniform Fire Code Standards.
Go for the trifecta and send that one to the Committee on Public Safety as well.
Okay. Then uh, and next we are on the ordinance for passage. And I can read all four into record first, if that's.
That would be a, a date. Jim, yes? Is this, nope, you're, you're muted, sir, and you might be, I think you might be referencing the fact that some of these are incorrectly stated as repeals on their cover sheets.
Yes, the, the actual ordinances in the package, uh, first of all, eight is okay, or six is okay. Seven is okay. Eight has a repealer ordinance. It was supposed to be a civil infraction ordinance. And the same thing with nine, so you have in your packet. Um, ordinances to, it, it says it in the title, but the actual ordinances in the package. Are repealers for uh, eight and nine.
Is this something we should, we should just move eight and nine? Pause on those. Pause on those? Do we need them to be? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move eight and nine to next, the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, just to make sure we get the right thing in the record. If they pass, we don't want them incorrect. So. Um, Clark Jackson, we're just gonna do eight and nine tonight. Six and seven are accurately reflected in the packet and on the agenda.
And I think the explanation, Mr. Chair, is that there were so many ordinances that came through and some of them were. Just amending, you know, in committee back and forth. And I think just the wrong ones got into the.
No, we just want to make sure the titles reflect the intent. So we'll we'll have those cleaned up. And then Lisa, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, I would just indicate that the number seven, the loud and boisterous in the packet is also not the final. The way that that one is written would arguably repeal the whole ordinance, not just subsection B. So there was an update. Um, that was submitted.
Okay, then let's, we'll, we'll, we'll move seven, eight and nine to the next meeting unless Councilmember Spitzley's got something on six. She wants to kick us backwards for, okay? All right, well, we'll make sure that those are accurately put in the system for two weeks from now. So go be loud for a little bit longer. Let me see here. Where are we? Clark Jackson, if you'd like to read number six into the record, that would be ideal.
Yes, and I also think between the new software Civic Clerk and Laserfish, that's, we need to refine that process.
We're still working out those kinks.
Yeah, so I apologize for that error here. So I will read number six into the record. It's an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing classified ordinances by amending their six five six. Section six five six point zero five to provide that the penalty for the violation of this ordinance shall be a municipal city infraction. Is read a second time by its title. Ordinance reported from the Committee on Equity, Division Inclusion is under order for immediate passage.
Thank you. Is there anything that needs to be added? We've had a lot of quite a bit of conversation on this. Councilmember Spitzley, I know it's your committee, but Councilmember Jackson's ordinance, is there anything that you need to add? Councilmember Jackson, yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you. It's not anything to change what we've done. I just want to add that. If we amend this to a civil infraction, it still does not allow people to be in the park after dark. It only changes the penalty from a criminal jailable penalty that you get arrested for to a civil infraction. If a police officer finds someone in the park or someone's reported to be in the park and a police officer comes. They at any point can go up to that person, find out what they're doing, cite them for a civil infraction and tell them to leave. If they do not leave, they could be trespassed, which is an arrestable criminal offense. So I just want everybody to know that this isn't, does not mean anybody can go in the park after dark. It just means that. You won't go to jail right away for it unless you stay there beyond your. After the police officer tells you to leave. So that's all I had to add.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Would you like to move the ordinance?
I would move. Six fifty six oh five for a vote to amend to a civil infraction.
Thank you. There's proper motion before us. Is there any further discussion for members of the council? Seeing none. Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
To member Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
That's member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley.
Yes.
Motion carries. Eight zero.
Thank you very much. So and that concludes the ordinance for passage. The other three will be on the agenda next time we meet.
Uh, we're to the consent agenda.
Yeah, and I'm gonna pull that item because we already took care of the Juneteenth tribute. So I'm gonna. Hand the gavel over to my Vice President, Mr. Hussein.
All right, you have the floor, President Spatafor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to move the resolution recognizing June twenty twenty one as. LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Lansing. I don't need to rec, uh, read the entire. Um, or resolution and tribute. It's there in front of you. But we do declare this month of June twenty twenty one as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Lansing. And we urge residents to recognize the contributions made by many members of the community to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty and justice. Um, this is a resolution or tribute, rather, of of personal importance to myself, but also one for many people in our community. Who just a few years ago didn't have rights under state constitution or the US Constitution for marriage or recognition of of. Benefits or they will even visit your partner in life at the hospital. So we've come a long way, a lot of work to do yet, obviously. Uh, while recognizing that the long march for full equality for all and equity for all is, it's not been accomplished. But we can pause for this month and recognize LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And so I would move that resolution, the tribute.
Sure. So there's a motion on the floor. I'd like to thank President Spatafor for this important work. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Clark, would you please take the roll?
Okay, uh, Vice President Hussein.
Yes.
That's member Jackson.
Yes.
That's first bad for.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's member Wood.
Yes.
That's member Betts.
Yes.
That's member Dunbar.
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next resolution for action.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar. This is the public improvement for Alpha Devonshire Sewer, Man Water Main and Road Reconstruction Project, item twelve.
It took me a second to pull. That, okay, um. Yeah, and the the things that you guys dealt with in committee when I wasn't there, you're welcome to describe. As well too. But this is a PI for sewer water main and road reconstruction. It's not, I'm scrolling down the packet. Just remove it.
You've moved it, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the public improvement project. It is on Devonshire and Alpha Street. It's all lands from Alpha Street between East Kavanaugh Road and East Jolly Road, Devonshire Avenue between East Kavanaugh Road and East Jolly Roads, Samantha Street between South Penn. Devonshire Avenue and Kendon Drive between South Penn and Devonshire Avenue, excepting all public streets and alleys and other land deed not benefited. Um, it's going to, um. It's a public improvement that will benefit the properties and facility work and. Uh, a benefit district pursuant to chapter ten twenty six of Lansing Code of Ordinances should be established to especially. Assess for the public improvement. So that is what's going to be done with this resolution is. Prepare the preparations of a special assessment to fund this public improvement project. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar has made the motion. There is discussion. I see Councilmember was hand.
Um, can someone explain when this work, the potential of this work will be done?
Yeah, let me see if I can pull up my committee packet because I don't have it right here. Hold on a second.
Either one of you, because I was not there.
Now, this wasn't that, that wasn't that, that week.
Oh, this is the two weeks ago?
Yeah. Here it is. Um. I missed my red folder.
Is anyone on here from public service?
Mark Jones, maybe? I see a hand up from Mark Jones. Should I?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Hello, yes, I'm here. Um, this is my project. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mark, we can. Thank you.
Um, so this is a project that we're doing on. Uh, Alpha Devonshire, Kendon and Samantha. To upgrade, it's in conjunction with Border Water and Light to upgrade some water mains, do some sewer repair, and then we're gonna. Um, most of the project will get all new curbs and all new sidewalks. Um, the portion that we are assessing for are the residents' responsibility for sidewalk repairs. Um, and I. Well, I don't know what to. Um, the, um. I'm not sure if it's in your packet, but I've got some preliminary numbers based on the engineer's estimate. Um, the, uh. The highest amount that we would be assessing for. Um, is, hang on, I will bring that up. Um, really quick here. Uh, the maximum cost would be five hundred and seventy dollars. And the average owner cost would be a hundred and twenty one dollars. Um. And overall, the city will be covering about eighty percent of the costs for the sidewalk. Repairs and the residents will be taking about twenty percent of the cost for sidewalk repair.
Mr. Jones, my question was, um, when this project is slated. Um, to to happen, do you?
Oh, yes, sorry. Um, uh, we are expected to go out to bid later this week and then. Um, I believe we'll be starting in the fall, but most of the work will be taking place next spring. So that work will be taking place, most of the work will take place next spring. So.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, thank you.
Well, and we had, we had talked about this in committee. I apologize. This, I'm, I'm using the portal from the city website to track this and. Um, it was, it was a little difficult for me to scroll down and find where I was supposed to be. Um, we had asked that there be notification. Um, of all households about this and make sure that folks knew what the cost would be when. When this was settled and it would be marked so that they would know what was going on.
Yes, we will be notifying everyone of the involvement once we. Um, I I believe this will set the public hearing. And or it allows us to. Put the project out to bid and also sets the public hearing so that. Folks can comment on the project. Um, and then, once we have finalized bids, then we can finalize the role and say, okay, this is your. Um, this is your cost for for this project. Right now, we just have the engineer's estimate based on. Um, and so.
Yeah, interesting.
This is actually the.
Just to clarify, um, this will not set the public hearing. It puts in motion that process. So once the final amounts are determined, we can then set the public hearings and we'll do all of that. But.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. It it sets that in motion, but this won't be, there won't be a public hearing as a direct result of this vote quite yet.
Okay, okay.
Maybe a point without distinction, but one that might, if someone's paying attention, might matter. So.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mark, very much for stepping in there. Um, if there is any other discussion, would the clerk, with seeing no other further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Um, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Where's Spatafor?
Yes.
That's Mary Spitzley.
Yes.
That's member Wood.
Yes.
That's Mary Betts.
Yes.
That's member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next. Sorry. The next item on our agenda is the claim disposition. Um, you know, I'll give my hand over to the Vice President again, as I chaired this meeting. Um, this is a claim distribution for fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy six dollars in trash removal fees. At thirty two twenty two South Martin Luther King Boulevard. Um, it was cited for trash violations in December of twenty twenty with a compliance due date of. Uh, December eighth, twenty twenty. Permissal officer came back on the night and it was noted in the photos that we saw on committee. Still very messy. Uh, the trash contractor arrived about five days later. And we saw that in the timestamps on our photos and cleaning cleanup was performed. Code enforcement was then contacted by the title company handling the sale of property. But there was more trash removal invoice on one twenty eight twenty one. The listing agent. Contacted code enforcement regarding the fees, wanting us to waive some of all these assessments. Um, they have been cited three times on this property, totaling about fourteen thousand dollars in committee. Um, there was no dispute that the work was done, uh, just that the that they wanted it to be less. Um, so the claim was, the recommendation from the committee is to deny, and I would make the motion to deny the claim.
All right, thank you. So there is a proper motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Clark, would you take the roll, please?
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's first metaphor.
Yes.
That's Mary Spitzley.
Yes.
That's member Wood.
Yes.
That's Mary Betts.
Yes.
That's over Dunbar.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
Motion carries. Claim is denied. The next, uh, Mr. Vice President, there we go. Next item is a liquor license approval for a salt brewing company. Councilmember Dunbar, this was from the nineteenth of May.
Salt brewing company, Micro Brewery is going in up in the old. Um, one of the, one of the spaces in the old Beeland Forest property on Ionia. And this is a. Request for them to be approved for their liquor license and. Request to notify Michigan Liquor Control Commission of the action taken. And I would move that we approve. We met with them on May nineteenth and everything seems to be moving ahead as as planned. So I move for approval.
All right, is there, there's a proper motion before us? Um, of note, there is a church in the vicinity that has been properly notified. Um, and, um. There you go. So Councilmember Wood.
Very, I was gonna say the church is very supportive of this whole project.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes, my concern about this is when this property came before us and we granted a brownfield. For this property, the discussion with the neighborhood on what was gonna go in there. Were the potential of some offices or, um. Neighborhood type of retail and. Um, there was no discussion about alcohol or. Um, you know, and and I realized things changed from the time the brownfield was. Um, was granted and COVID and all the other things. Um, with that, um, my question would be, do you know whether the owners reached back out to the neighborhood to have a discussion? Um, with them about this?
That did not come up in committee, no.
Um. I'm sure the votes are probably here. I'm just not gonna support it because I do feel that they should have had a conversation. Um, with the neighborhood. It wasn't until I saw this on the agenda that I was aware, you know, that. There were some changes with this. And I think the representation that was made again. Um, as they presented their brownfield, um, is different direction from where it, where it's going now. So. Um. Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, is, is your on call?
I, uh, remind me of the name of the, there's a Donna. I wonder if Nate's on here. There was Donna and Nate. I don't know, Councilmember.
Okay. That's all right. And and honestly, I don't know that it would have been this, um, this operator that would have been the one originally making the connection. It would have been Scott. Um, Schmidt probably more than this gentleman. So it might be a question better posed to the development company. In the future.
Okay. All right, that is proper motion. No further discussion being seen. I ask the clerks, please call the roll on the liquor license approval. Brian.
This is Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley. That's a member Spitzley.
No.
That's a member Wood.
No.
That's a member Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member, uh, Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries by two.
Thank you. The next one is supportive updating part one fifteen of Michigan's solid waste plan. Um, I remember asking the questions on this one, so I'll take this one again, Mr. Vice President.
All right, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would move, um, the supportive updating part one fifteen of Michigan's solid waste plan. This is a, um, resolution, uh, one only pull it up here, cause I was deep in the application for liquor control. Is this a, a recognition of, um, I'm sorry. It is a resolution that would, uh, basically speaks to the cities, the city councils, um, support for uh, amending Public Act five-five-eight. Um, substantial update of the solid waste laws in part one fifteen of the advanced for local county, regional, state recycling goals and county materials management planning. Uh, this is basically a major rewrite of the solid waste plan for the state of Michigan to focus in on ways that we can incentivize recycling goals, plan for the development of facilities necessary to manage the recycling goals that we set. Funding available for the goal of tripling Michigan's recycling, uh, rate. Um, and we've, I, I asked this question in committee, nothing in this resolution or the revised solid waste plan is nothing, is something that the city of Lansing hasn't already worked toward or done with the opening of our MRF for now firmly, um, able to meet those goals and, and, and kind of be self-sustainable there. So it's just a simple resolution, so I would move the resolution. This came from the Public Service Department, um, kind of as a, an effort to get support for the legislature to act on this.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, clerk, would you take the, whoa, Councilwoman Wood?
Just real quickly to clarify, you said our MRF, that MRF is privately owned, that's not, we're contracting with them.
Yeah, they're, they're, the.
I just wanted.
Yes, right, the one we were intimately involved in, in, in bringing to town and, and setting up and.
Okay, I just, I wanna make sure something hadn't gone over my head. Thank you.
All right, clerk Jackson, would you please take the roll?
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
Remember Wood.
Yes.
That's a Mary Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's a Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, next item on our agenda is the Act two-two-twenty-one, um, and that is tonight, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, let me get my notes here, so I know what I'm doing here. I apologize. Sorry about this, so, um, what we have before us is, um, a resolution, um, for the street vacation, um, at, um, portion of North Eighth Street between Jerome Street and East Michigan Avenue, and this is, was brought forth by Sparrow Health Systems. Um, they, um, own a parcel of the land to the east and the west and the size of the subject right of way. Um, this was reviewed by the planning board, um, and found that the request was, could be granted without significant impact on traffic circulation network and, um, it says the subject right of way will be owned by Sparrow Health Systems and the utilities within the right of way can be protected by the easements. The planning board, um, voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the request um, to vacate North Eighth Street between Jerome Street and East Michigan Avenue, we've had a public hearing on it. It's went back to development and planning and now we are here for a final passage and with that, I would move the resolution.
It's a proper motion, is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a Mary Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's for Jackson.
Yes.
That's a member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good, next item on our agenda is item seventeen, Brownfield Plan Number Seventy-five, Amendment Number Two. Yes, that is Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, what we have before us is an amendment to the Brownfield Plan. Um, that would cover, um, that currently covers the capital city market, um, brought forth by the Gillespie Group. Um, this, uh, the amendment would, um, extend the Brownfield Plan over across the street to the former, um, Clara's Market. Um, the original Brownfield, um, TIF request was for nine-point-nine million. They have estimated that, um, only five-point-one million was spent for estimated actual activities with a projected surplus of four-point-seven million dollars. The projected eligible activities for across the street, um, at six-thirty-seventh East Michigan are estimated to be approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars and so it would cover, um, the Brownfield, plan would be amended to cover across the street, but still, um, it had anticipated to come in, um, under budget and save money and with that, I would move the, um, oh, we had a public hearing on it and it came back to development and planning. Um, and with that, I would move, um, the resolution for final action, the amendment.
Thank you, there's a proper motion, is there any discussion on the amendment to Brownfield seventy-five? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
That's a Mary Betts.
No.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's Mary Spatafor.
Yes.
That's Mary Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item on our agenda is the grant acceptance for the CDBG Home and Emergency Solutions Grant. And that would be the Chair of our Ways and Means Committee, Carol, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor, um, what this is, is, um, some additional funds that we, uh, were granted, um, this is in the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand one hundred and eighteen, um, dollars, uh, this would allow, uh, additional money to be, um, utilized in, um, outreach, emergency, um, shelters, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, um, the, uh, tracking network for the homeless. Um, it's, um, uh, actually the administration costs say the same. Um, so with that, I would move the acceptance of these, um, community development block grant dollars.
Thank you, that is a proper motion, um, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, I skipped one accidentally, we'll go back, thank you. So I said if there are questions on this one.
Okay, sorry about that, no.
Gathering real quick, so it was a good thing that I had them both right in front of me.
Listen, I'm just trying to keep you all on your toes. For a while. All right, so we are, the motion before us is relative to item nineteen and that is the CDBG, uh, ESG, uh, grant, so.
Yes.
Um, any further discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's Mary Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a member Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
I heard her whisper, yes, I think maybe.
Yes, I'm, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you, that is, that takes us to our previous item, number eighteen, which is a community energy management grant, uh, grant acceptance, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, um, this is in the amount of nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, this is actually a, uh, technical and, uh, financial feasible, feasibility study. Uh, they would be looking at the Foster Center, the Guyer Community Center, LET Center and the potential for, uh, the Smith Center, uh, what this would be is, um, the possibility of putting solar plus battery storage on selected Lansing community centers, um, again, this is only doing the assessments, um, for them. It would come back to us, um, after this is done with recommendations on cost effectiveness and, um, and implementation, so with that, I would move the acceptance of this grant and there is no, um, dollars that, um, our city match, um, from this.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood, that's proper motion and I do see no further discussion. And, oh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I'm gonna have a hard time getting to my raised hand, just a question, is Boardware and Light involved in this since it has to do with, looks like the production of power?
Um, they did not indicate, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, President Spatafor or Vice President Hussein, who was going to do the assessment, um, so I, I would assume, um, rightly or wrongly that, you know, there will be discussions since the board is, um, part of doing solar, um, feasibility out there. Uh, but this, um, was just the technical, um, part of it.
And it was also, I think if, if memory serves, kind of think of us more as a customer rather than the owner and this is just our ability to, to install some of our own solar to reduce our dependence on, on other types of energy. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Wood, appreciate your clarifications, um, if the clerk would please call the roll, I see no further discussion.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Brian.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's a Mary Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a member Betts.
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you very much, the next item on our agenda is item twenty, workers' compensation settlement ending in one-two-six, Councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Spatafor, the first one that we have before us is a redemption, um, that was negotiated for seventy-five thousand dollars, um, this releases us from all, um, past and present and future claims. This is a contract employee, um, many of the questions that we usually ask, um, during this process was are, um, was the person offered another job within the city, no. Um, was the person eligible for, um, retirement, uh, because this was a contract employee, no. Um, and will this have an impact on their retirement, um, if they were receiving retirement? Again, because this is a contract employee, um, there was no retirement that they will be receiving. So with that, I would move the, um, settlement, um, again, for the workers' comp claim ending in one-two-six for seventy-five thousand dollars.
It's a proper motion, are there any questions or further discussion from the committee? Seeing none, if the clerk, please call the roll.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's Mary Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a member Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, next item is item twenty-one, another workers' compensation settlement ending in two-one-eight, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, uh, this particular claim is, um, from an employee, a, a former employee within the Lansing Police Department. This would be a negotiated settlement for twenty thousand dollars, this will release us from all um, past, present and future claims against the city, um, this person was not offered another job uh, within, um, the city, um, this person, um, will the, their retirement, um, or, um, this person is already retired, so it won't have any effect um, on their retirement and, uh, with that, I would move, um, the settlement of this claim.
That is a motion, I would ask, seeing no further discussion, I ask the clerk to call the roll.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's Mary Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a member Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
Motion carries. Side on.
Thank you.
So then next, we are to speaker registration for public comments on city government-related matters. For those wishing to make a public comment, you can start raising your hands now virtually and we will keep that window open within three minutes after the first speaker's, uh, comments begin. And you can start, uh, you can raise your hand using the star nine if you're on a phone and click down the raise hand icon in the chat room, you can press alt Y keys, uh, same time for a Windows computer or press option Y keys at the same time for an Apple computer. While public comment is signing up, we are to report to city officer boards and commissions, communication petitions.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered as read at full and that the appropriate referrals be made by, made by you, President Spatafor.
Our promotion, seeing no further discussion, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll on that motion.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's a Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a Mary Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a Mary Betts.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have your items from the city clerk, then to boards and commission.
Place on file.
Executive Directive twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-one rescind hiring freeze.
I place on file.
Executive Order twenty-twenty-one zero-three, city building closures with exception for Foster, Guyer and Schmitz Community Center.
Place on file.
Liquor license for the Acapulco Grill for transfer shares ownership at three-hundred North Clifford.
Community, uh, operations.
Liquor license for Ocean Crab Inc. for SDM and Class C license, Sunday sales AM, Sunday sales PM, dance, entertainment and outdoor service permits at seven-twenty-seven East Miller Road.
City operations.
We have a liquor license, uh, in Michigan's Sports Turf LLC for a transfer of a Class C license, license from a tavern license.
City operations.
Rules of procedures from the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Public safety and place on file, please.
Uh, we have a grant application from Inglewood County, City of Lansing Community Corrections Program subcontract for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two.
Media and Ways and Means.
We have a board and water light budget for fiscal year ending thir- June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two and a capital forecast for fiscal years twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven. And I also, the mayor, appointment of Greg Friends as a fourth board member of the Board of Public Service, her term expired June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Any on city operations?
The appointment of Michael McKissick as an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Board of Directors for term expire February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
The committee on development and planning.
We have a budget amendment fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, year-end budget resolution.
Create the whole.
We have a workers' comp settlement for claim two-one-eight that was handled earlier this evening.
Let's just place that on file.
We have an appointment of Marine Saxon as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment Public Facilities Authority for term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Create the whole.
We have a communication petition, claim appeal, claim eighteen-thirty-nine from Donna and Nancy McKinder for four-hundred-and-ninety dollars in trash violation fees at three-twenty Hag Court.
Committee on City Operations.
Okay, next is the motion of excuse. Next is the motion of excuse absentee.
We have a motion to excuse councilmember Garrison. Councilmember Spitzley has made the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll in motion.
That's a member Hussein.
Yes.
That's a member Jackson.
Yes.
That's a member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's a member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a member Wood.
Yes.
That's a member Bets.
Yes.
That's a member Dunbar.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero. We are to remarks by councilmembers.
Anyone have anything further to add to this evening's discussion? All right, we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you. That's it.
Marks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, anything to add? No? Okay.
Okay, so we're coming to public comment on city government-related matters. Remember, you have up to three minutes to speak on any city-related matters. To you to raise hand, that window is closing three minutes after the first person speaks. If everyone could first say their first and last name for the record, that is appreciated. Again, the raise your hand function, you can dial nine on a phone, raise hand icon in the chat room, alt Y for a Windows computer, option Y key for the Apple computer. Our first speaker is Kyle, filed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Thanks, thanks clerk Jackson. Last name is Richard, for the record, R I C H A R D. I also want to say thank you to Councilman Jackson for his work on the fourth order. I think it is a step in the right direction when it comes to transparency for this city, and I think it offers a model for others to follow should they choose to do so. I'd also say, just politely ask that y'all stay off your phones during these meetings. This is city government business, and the city deserves your full and undivided attention. Andy, you're the worst at this. You can't even keep it out of the frame. It's honestly disrespectful to your fellow public servants and to the people of Lansing. The last time I spoke before this body, I expressed that I was profoundly disappointed regarding the lack of words and actions from this body with regard to Mayor Andy Shore. And from the sounds of it, it's even worse than we originally thought. So, good luck with that. But I'm not here to talk about Andy today. I'd like to talk about Brian's proposal at the last city council meeting. My understanding of the proposal is that there were some existing funds, six unfilled positions at the Lansing Police Department. And Brian's proposal was said, hey, we've got this money line around, why not spend some of it on a social worker? Why not create a job, right? And why not, and, you know, and improve our community, and improve the Lansing Police Department, right? And the fact that this went down seven to one, like, at this point, shouldn't be surprising, it shouldn't be shocking. It's, it's honestly just sad, though. Like, it really is. And if you're somebody who's like, well, I, you know, I really wanted to see how the, how the social workers we already hired, I want to see how that works out. I want to see how that goes before we hire more. You know, the best thing about, you know, if you really want a good experiment, you need sample size, okay? So you can bring more people on, and then, whoa, you've expanded your experiment, and you can actually have more data to go off of. But y'all don't want the data because the data would tell you that we need more social workers and less punitive policing in this community. Yeah, this would, this, this would have been the smallest of baby steps in the right direction. So the fact that this went down seven to one, it, it really, I, I don't, I don't have anything to say to y'all beyond that. Like, this, it's just sad. It's just sad. And I really don't understand your vote, Kathy Dunbar, I really don't. I, it, it, it honestly perplexes me because it makes me question, does Kathy Dunbar represent change in the city of Lansing? Or does Kathy Dunbar represent the continuation of the white power structure in the city of Lansing? And that's all I'm gonna say on that, so have a good rest of your night.
Okay, our next speaker is, first, we're closing the window for speaking, and then, so our next speaker is Loretta Stanaway, filed by Corrette Duckett Freeman.
Once again, good evening, Loretta Stanaway. And I would like to, in some way, counter what the first speaker just said. Many of you may be aware that over the weekend, there were several violent instances, but in particular, there was a episode at the Logan Square where over three hundred people, as I heard it on the scanner at least, were involved in a situation where someone drove up and started shooting into the area that those people were in. It was quite chaotic for a while, and thankfully, nobody was shot or injured, but that was, I think, more luck than anything else. I have learned since then that on that night, the LPD South End, at the very least, was operating on minimum staffing levels. And I think that we need to know as citizens, when we start talking about things like how many positions are funded or unfunded, filled or unfilled, and whether or not we could spare a police officer for a social worker, we need to know how many shifts in this year have been at minimum staffing levels, which puts the citizens and the police at much greater risk. We are rapidly losing the deterrent effect of having a sufficiently staffed police department in this town. And when we take steps that tie their hands further by removing tools from their toolbox that they previously used to make stops when they were investigating whether or not someone might be partaking in criminal activity, we have further shorted ourselves. So I would strongly urge somebody, whether it's the Committee on Public Safety Chair or the Council Chair, to come back with a report next meeting on how many shifts in this current year have been staffed at minimum levels throughout the city. So I am going to request a status report on where things are at with Brandon Bets. It's my understanding an ethics complaint was filed by Michael Lynn. The Ethics Committee meets tomorrow night. I think the citizens are entitled to a report on where things are with the potential to remove him from office where he is currently very ineffective in taking up payroll in time that should be going to someone who could serve the constituents in the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Kelsey Brienne.
I think you skipped.
I apologize. You're right. I apologize. Loretta, Doc.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Clarreta Duckett Freeman. I'm candidate for city council at large. I'd just like to express concern about what I heard at the committee of the home meeting earlier. Three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money given to a group that many Lansing community members have concerns with. One, how the alliance was formed. Two, who was chosen. Three, the non-disclosure agreement. And four, now the request of use of the taxpayers' money. Councilmember Dunbar brought up a question that no one wanted to respond to, and the city attorney apparently did not want it addressed either. There are seven racial discrimination lawsuits, and they were caused by treatment of the mayor, his administration, and some nice old-school white supremacy. It's harmful, dishonest, and triggering to hear some of you discuss equity and how to achieve it, all while ignoring recent harms. Perhaps if the city council were forward-thinking, the city would not even have seven lawsuits. Equity can only be achieved for everyone. Unlike equality, it is more complex than just giving everyone the same thing. It requires for y'all to throw out following rules and be humble and publicly apologize for past harms caused, especially the most recent ones. And it requires asking folks who were harmed how to repair it. This whole wait and see and making marginalized people wait for a racialized system to make decisions, that's the work of being a colonizer. That's not community work. Stop being colonizers. Police don't stop crime. They arrive after crime has happened. Police are today and historically slave catchers. If you want safe communities, then you need to invest in your people. Safe communities do not have high numbers of police. Do some research on it. They do not have a high police presence in the community. Do some research on it. If you actually care about your people, if you actually care about, like, Lansing, then you need to defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for skipping you there. Now, the last speaker is Kelsey.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yep, my name is Kelsey. I just want to come out here and talk a couple of things. Before I say anything, Claretta, who just spoke, is running for city council, and I fully back her. If you do not know who Claretta Duckett Freeman is, look into her. She's incredible and actually gives me hope for our city. And then, just a couple of things, I, people didn't catch this if they weren't in the committee whole. Smurka actually did confirm, but there's actually a thirty-one lawsuits, not just seven lawsuits. That was news to me. That is a horrifying reality that there are thirty-one lawsuits against the city, seven of which are confirmed against Mayor Shore for racial inequity, and he's running on equity and transparency, like, that doesn't check out for me. And the fact that we're talking about Juneteenth and all these cleanup efforts are amazing, but then we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars for this, this training. And it just, like, doesn't make sense. I feel like you're, like, you're talking out of one part of your mouth. It's like, let's do all this, but like, let's completely ignore what's happening on the other side. So, yeah, that's just a huge concern to me. I haven't been on council, frankly, for a couple of weeks because it's, it's discouraging coming on here. If people are not aware of the situation, they don't know how jacked up our city leadership is. But I don't know why you're still here. I do hope Ethics Committee is able to address what's going on. And, yeah, I, I am looking forward to the Juneteenth celebration. I'm excited to celebrate black folks in our city, but part of celebrating them is just giving breaks, them not being afraid of police brutality. I also, seriously, I think we should look into getting more social workers. So, yeah, that's it. I'll give away the rest of my time.
Thank you. Seeing no further business for the council at eight fifty-five, we are adjourned.